Good evening and welcome to the March 9th Board of Education meeting. Welcome to all those that are in attendance this evening. We love to have people in our audience who bring good news, et cetera, to us. The meeting will now come to order, so would you please all stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the spirit of liberty and justice for all.
Stacy, would you please take her roll call?
William Baumgart?
Here.
Barbara Brzink?
Here.
Steve Edlund?
Here.
Ellen Langill?
Here.
Patricia Madden?
Here.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Here.
Kurt O'Brien?
Here.
Karen Reinacek?
Yeah.
Joseph Como.
Mr. Como is excused this evening? Okay. Stacy, could you please verify that the meeting has been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Okay, fine. We have no bright lights tonight and no recognitions, but we have a report by student representative tonight. We would like to welcome our student representative from West High School, Amy Tran and Emily Schumaker. Please come forward to the podium. Welcome. What good news do you bring us tonight? Okay.
I think they're trying to get the...
Oh. Technical difficulties. Bear with us. We have a new system. We have to work out the bugs.
I'm a sophomore at West.
Hi, I'm Amy Tran and I'm a senior at West. In council, we are having a blood drive this Friday, March 11th, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. At the field house. And we have a blood drive committee of six members who help around the blood drive. We would escort donors and give them food. So we help around with that. And this past February, we had a winter formal that was combined. We've been working on this for... We tried to do this last year and the year before, but it didn't happen until this year. And we think it was really successful. A lot of students showed up because last year, a lot of the dances got canceled because of low attendance. But this year, we had 650 students, which is about the size of Homecoming. And I've heard a lot of good feedback from it. And also this time, there were no music complaints heard by the students. For NHS, we talked about this last December. Our service project for the year was Walk for ABCD, which is after breast cancer diagnosis. Raised about $2,000 and donated to them. We had a walk and we also sold shirts to raise money. Also, for the next chapter of NHS, the induction ceremony is March 23rd at 7:00 p.m. For drama, the one-act festival is today right now, so it's going on as we speak. And there are nine student-directed one-acts. And at the end, we get to vote for best direction, best set, and best actor and actress. For our spring musical, we have Nonsense, which is a hysterical musical that also includes tap dancing and humor that is more for adults, so we're not having a matinee for children this time. So the dates are April 21st and 22nd at 7:30 p.m., April 23rd at 4:00 p.m. and 7:30 p.m., and April 24th at 2:00 p.m. Also, we're going to have a matinee for older people during school, but we're not sure when that is yet. So we'll have six shows in the span of four days. Also, we're also going to have middle schoolers in this play. For academic decathlon, they were pretty successful this year. They got second overall at state and they were first in Division II. They were third in Super Quiz, even though we only have eight members, unlike the other schools who have nine members. So that's pretty impressive for the amount of players they have. And they had over 40 personal medals, as you can see by the picture, and they had team trophies in economics and math. And for next year, a lot of them are going to be leaving. So we need to recruit more people for next year, since we're only going to have honors category. So that means we need to recruit at least six more members for varsity and scholastic. Model UN is kind of a smaller club, but we're going to have a conference on March 17th and 18th. And the thing that we're doing different this year is we're trying to have a bigger commitment. So we're actually turning in position papers and not like last year where we kind of just researched and didn't turn anything in. And with these position papers, we can win awards for best research and best participation. Also, we're going to stay overnight this year to communicate with the other schools and take a bigger part in this club.
Within the next few weeks, our spring sports are starting at West. This week, we've already had track and boys and girls lacrosse start. Next week, we have girls soccer and girls softball. And the week after, we have boys tennis and boys golf. And for athletic dates and competitions, that's on our athletic website, and most of them will be after spring break. Next Thursday, March 17th, we have our Athletic Leadership Day. And it's a day where a bunch of athletes get together. And we're going to River Glen Church. And we're talking about things, how we can better our program. And we get together. It doesn't matter what grade you're in or what sport you're in. You get put together and we share ideas. It's from 8:00 to 3:00, and you guys are welcome to come. I went last year and it was really helpful because we bounced a lot of ideas off each other. And I'm in tennis and we bettered our program based on what we heard from other clubs, too. Last week, our choir went to the state Capitol to sing. And one of our students' parents actually goes to the Capitol and works there, so they got a private tour.
Also, we mentioned this last time about the mascot and our "What Would Eugene Do?" bracelets, so we have these for everyone.
Really? Dr. Langill?
Thank you both for doing this and for the wonderful show, too. When you go to the Model UN, it sounds like you've gone or you're gonna go. And do you know, is it in the Union and then where do you stay? Do they have...
It's at UWM. So the Model UN Conference for Wisconsin High Schools and Upper Michigan is at UWM.
Yeah.
And then...
Is it at the Union, do you know? Or do you know? Must be the Union. But where do they put you up? Where do you stay? Do you know?
Oh, there's a hotel somewhere for all the delegates to go to.
Okay.
And that's where they will have activities like dances or bowling.
Oh, great. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I have two questions. You know, I understand you're gonna have a blood drive. You know, who is not eligible to give blood? You know, I would love to do it, but I don't know that, you know, what your eligibility is. So do you know?
I know.
Do you?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't.
Well, I don't know about you, but I will say I went to give blood because my mom always did.
Yes.
And they wouldn't let me, so it was embarrassing. But I've had skin cancer, if you've had any kind of cancer. It doesn't matter what.
That's what I thought.
They will.
That's what I thought.
So, sorry.
Okay, disqualified.
Yeah.
That's what I thought. Okay, and then secondly, when did you say your softball season begins?
Uh, next week.
Next week? Do you know what day?
Uh, I think tryouts start on Monday, but I'm not positive.
Okay, when do your games start? Do you know?
Um, I think they start after spring break.
After spring break, that's what I thought. Okay.
So what's the age cutoff for older people to come to the... Isn't anyone over 12? Is that a question you can't answer? Probably better not.
Careful.
Don't go there.
Okay, well, thank you very much for bringing us more good news about your high school. And we are proud of your decathlon team, always have been and always will be. So thank you for the good news tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we... Yes? Okay, all right. We are now at the section of our meeting where there is an opportunity for citizens to speak. As had been past practice, each individual will be limited to two to three minutes, time to speak in order for us to hear from our community and then get on with the agenda of our meeting. Thank you. I will signal Mrs. Madden will signal the speaker at two and a half minutes in order to allow wrap-up of their comments. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language in any manner, and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future Board of Education meetings. We also expect that our audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the Board of Education and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, please silence your cellphone. Our first speaker this evening is Amy Gruber. Amy, would you please come up to the podium?
Hi, my name is Amy. This is my daughter, Mary. And my son, Logan. They're both students in the district, and I'm here because of a situation that happened with my daughter. She goes to Lowell Elementary. And a student in her class wrote on a notebook that they wanted to kill her. And I am not happy with how this has been handled. I have a very detailed description of everything that happened and all of the contact that I have tried to make and how I do not feel as follow-up has been taken. But I will forego that part. And I just want you to know that a lot of parents are concerned about this, concerned about the bullying that's going on in the school and how it is not being addressed. Myself, my husband, and parents of other kids in the school see this as a serious issue. I have asked many people within the school district what they are going to do to ensure that my child is safe. My child, as well as any child, deserves a safe and successful learning environment. And with this boy in the classroom bullying most of the kids in the class, how is that being provided? My children are expected to behave, participate, and do well in school. It is not right that my child is not given proper circumstances to do this. Consistently telling a parent that their child's safety is none of their concern and then being told that it's being handled does not make my daughter, my husband, or myself feel as though she is safe. As the victim in this threat, I feel as though all the rights have been given to the perpetrator and not to the victim. I do understand the right to privacy, but I also have a right that my children are safe in school. Therefore, I would like to know what the district's policy is on a threat against a classmate. And the answer that I keep getting is, well, we deal with it on a case-by-case basis. And that is not an acceptable answer to me. The district's policies for... The district has policies for everything else, and there should be a very strict policy on this. My child no longer feels safe in her classroom. She has missed days of school because of this. And I also would like to know what the policy is or the steps that are taken after the initial bullying, additional steps that are taken following that one, when the bullying continues, when the bullying is to other students or continuing to my child. I want to know if there's a difference between a written threat, a verbal threat versus a social media threat and why there is a difference. And I want to express my disappointment in the Waukesha School District. We moved here from Milwaukee because of the Waukesha School District and because of the program that it provides, especially for deaf and hard of hearing. And right now, I have complete lack of trust in the district. When a blatant threat like this is handled without this or in this way, in the face of the violence that is going on and the increased violence in schools, I fear for my daughter's safety today, tomorrow, and all of the other kids as she continues her career in school. I would like to add you one last thought. If someone you worked with wanted to kill you because you asked them to do their job, how would you feel about still having to work with that person on a daily basis? Can my daughter have a moment just to share her feelings? No, you don't want to. Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. Do you have any questions that I can answer or...
Thank you, Mrs. Gruber. We usually do not engage in dialogue.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
But we take your information and we will address it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other people in the audience that would like to address the board this evening? Any other comments from the audience? Okay, hearing none, then we'll move on with the rest of our meeting. We have a need for approval of minutes from the January 14th, 2016 Executive Session Expulsion Panel, February 10th, regular board minutes, February 11th, Executive Session Expulsion Panel, February 29th, Executive Session Expulsion Panel. Could we have a motion, please?
Move.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Baumgart, seconded by Dr. Langill to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion? Okay, Stacy, would you take your roll call, please?
Barbara Brzink?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Ellen Langill?
Aye.
Steve Edlund?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Motion approved 8-0. Thank you. Okay, Superintendent Communications, please.
No letters this evening.
Okay. I have a quick update on the Waukesha Education Foundation from the... For our meeting tonight. The 2016 grant application process opened on February 15th. This year, $30,000 has been allocated for innovative proposals submitted by our talented staff. Following the review, recommendation, and approval process, all grant applications are notified of the status of their grants prior to the end of the school year. Plans are underway for the Waukesha Education Foundation Fun Run Walk. Colorful yard signs are popping up all over town announcing that this year's event will be Saturday, April 16th, and held at North High School. Our list of sponsors for this event continues to grow, and we are grateful for the generous support of the community. The planning committee is working to make this a family-friendly event and is exploring fun post-run activities. The Bob Duckett Memorial Golf Outing will be held on Monday, July 18th. This is a great opportunity to play one of Waukesha County's finest private courses, The Legend of Merrill Hills, and support the Waukesha Education Foundation. This concludes my report. Okay, moving forward, Mr. Baumgart, could we have a safety committee report, please?
Yes, safety committee met this morning, March 9th. We, as always, reviewed the student and the workers' compensation injury reports, and there was nothing terribly unusual to report. Next item, the only new or revisited item dealt with school security on voting day at the schools where voting does occur. We will be increasing security at those locations that day. Another item was added. In February this year, the district received a dividend check from our insurance company, Liberty Mutual, in the amount of $33,705. This dividend is based on our 2014-2015 policy period and represents the money that we earned back because of our low workers' compensation rates. Dividends are typically paid about six months after the policy year ends. And in addition to this, the district's success in our return-to-work programs and in the prompt claim monitoring has resulted in a decrease in our district experience modification factor. If you don't understand what all that is... If you don't understand what that is, Darren's here to help me. But anyway, we have had good success with keeping injuries, accidents, and the workers' compensation under control, and we benefit from that. And this will represent about a $15,800 potential premium savings in our next policy period. So that concludes my safety report.
Okay. Yes?
Thank you.
Ms. Reinacek?
Bill, for the Lowell Elementary School wanting to sled?
Yes.
Our insurance company denied for the kids to go sledding for positive behavior. What about the Parks and Rec when we have the Waukesha Jamboree? How is that... I mean, they've got a ton of kids sledding.
The situation with the sledding at Lowell was simply that Lowell had a program going on with the... If a kid had particularly good behavior or something like that, they were allowed to go out on that hill to sled as a school event. We, at the safety committee last month, we said, "That's not a good idea. We're gonna not allow that." And the insurance company agreed with that. Relative to the jamboree, we have no involvement with our kids, you know, sending our kids onto that hill. The hill is not ours. That hill is the city's hill. So I don't quite see where your connection is.
There is a different level of liability when it's a school event. That changes from a voluntary sledding, you know, sledding down the hill in a jamboree. And Wisconsin statutes does limit liability when you are knowingly participating in a potentially... An event that you could get hurt in or worse. And so by having it a school function, we lose some of that liability protection because it's a school event versus a voluntary event through the jamboree. So that's probably the biggest difference, is the loss of the liability.
What about when the STEM kids make sleds out of cardboard and such, and then they go and test them out? Is that not gonna be...
I don't know. I mean, it depends on the situation, where they're doing it, you know?
So it's not just a no sledding policy that we have? It's just Lowell Hill?
I think, yeah, given that that could be the case, given the size of the hill, I don't know if they were planning on using the toboggan runs, which...
I'm not aware of the...
Here, any normal person.
What the STEM program is doing and whether that involves sending the kids down Lowell Hill. I don't know that.
Not Lowell, St. Mary's Hill?
Well, I guess next winter, we'll have to look into that. Hopefully, we won't have to do it this winter. I will check that out with the Governance Committee if we're at STEM.
Okay, Mr. Edlund and Ms. O'Brien.
Was this an issue based on claims?
Which one?
No sledding?
No, it was an issue based on the fact that when we are sending the kids down a hill that is not ours and it's a hill where people get hurt on, we just didn't think it was a good idea for us to be involved in that.
Okay, so they're venturing off school district property.
Oh, way off. Up that hill.
Park.
Yeah.
Ms. O'Brien?
Well, it would seem to me that just saying no to sledding is kind of the easy way out. I mean, is there a possibility that we can... Maybe not so much on Lowell, but let's just look at the STEM, for instance, if they're doing an activity that's similar to that. Actually, it's similar to that. We should come up with a... We should ask our legal counsel, our insurance company, if we can come up with a waiver document that the parents have to sign.
And I believe there are some issues, incidents where they were using smaller hills to do stuff like that.
Yeah.
I can't name them.
It's a waiver.
But I will take that up at the next safety committee meeting as to whether there should be a universal plan or not.
Right.
And I don't think it will be. Because if you've sledded, and I have, on Lowell Hill, it's significantly more risky than some of the backyard hills that people are using, so...
But I do think there's a corollary there, you know, from what Ms. Reinacek said. And, you know, it would be appropriate for us to have a signed release liability form from the parents.
Mm-hmm.
For an activity like the STEM sledding.
Well, we do have activities where the middle and high school kids go skiing on hills, but it's exactly what you said. It's a release.
Yeah, so we could do that for STEM, too, I guess, if we decide that we wanna...
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Baumgart, would you bring that up at the Governance meeting?
The specific STEM issue, I can.
Okay. Maybe you could get back to us.
Sure.
All right, thank you very much. Anything else? Okay, fine. We'll move on then.
How about charter reports?
Excuse me? Yes, charter reports.
Okay. I will take you through some charter school and other program reports. As I have in the past, taken some liberty of this report, included programs beyond charter schools. I'm gonna do this again, because I recently had a conversation with Dee Garcia, and I picked up some wonderfully positive news from her. She and 11... Well, 11 participants from our district participated, redundant, I know, National Association of Bilingual Education Conference last week. And they wish to sincerely thank our board, CNI, and the Business Department for their support of our ongoing development of the dual-language two-way program. I'm just gonna mention a couple highlights of the conference, and there will be more of them in your packet on Friday. The school district of Waukesha dual-language program is observed by many as being incredibly unique. This, you know, this is what we're doing in many of our programs. We are out in front again, well-developed and cutting-edge practice. So it's, again, a kudo for what we've done in Waukesha with this program. And just a couple other items that came up from Dee on this. And again, at the conference, all areas are struggling to find certified bilingual talent in grades nine through 12. And we've talked about that as a staff issue. We have Spanish language arts in place itself, but not the content areas. And she reports that the teacher surplus issue may come to some solutions with Puerto Rico, Colombia, and El Paso, Texas, being able to provide some solutions to the problem of finding teachers that will come up here from... If it come up in a spring like this one, they might do it, you know? Anyway, you get it. And one other thing, in 2012, we had three dual-language two-way kindergartens. In the fall of 2016, our district will have eight dual-language two-way kindergarten programs and three full-day dual-language two-way four-year-old kindergartens. So we are absolutely growing that program. Couple other reports. The Health Academy and the Engineering Academy reporting, in both cases, more than 50 students have now completed and accepted our invitation to be involved in both the Health and Engineering Academies this coming year. In addition, Steve mentions that they've welcomed a handful of upperclassmen into these programs. Summit View, you've seen some of this, but it's worth mentioning on the air, as Jeff says, "Probably my most exciting share yet." Summit View, Inc. has been named a National Magnet School of Excellence by the Magnet School Association of America, the National Association for Magnet and Theme-Based Schools. Summit View will be recognized and receive a National Magnet School of Excellence Merit Award during an award ceremony in May. And there's more, and it'll be in your packet on Friday. STEM Academy... Hawthorne STEM. Tina reports, "We have our first Destination Imagination Team competing this Saturday at Lake Dune Middle School. This is very exciting for Hawthorne STEM. Destination Imagination is a nonprofit, volunteer-led, cause-driven organization. We inspire and equip students to become the next generation of innovators and leaders. It requires students to use 21st century skills to take on the challenge." The reason I wanted to make a point there is, a year ago, we wondered where the STEM was at Hawthorne. We're beginning to see it really flourishing over there now.
Yes.
Lots of good programs. E-Achieve, "Continued streak of having more students on pace after the first four weeks of the second semester than we've ever had before." And Rich also put in a paragraph here I'll just mention. It will describe the marketing program that we're using this year to draw people into the E-Achieve program. And lastly, Saratoga STEM, there'll be information in your packet on that, because as always the case, Jim has got so many things to tell you about that I can't use up all of them here. But quite simply, there's a big program going on this... I lost the date, sorry. It's the Fluid Power Program. And that concludes my report on programs. And that concludes my report on programs.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgart. Any questions? Mr. Edlund?
Mr. Baumgart, when we talk about Hawthorne STEM and how that program has been developing, we've always had a bottleneck at Saratoga. Is this going to create an even larger bottleneck at Saratoga?
Will it someday? You mean, because?
Now, you've got two STEM programs around Hawthorne, right?
If we fill that one up, that will become a good problem to have. That's the way I view it. I mean, I think the STEM program is so powerful and doing so well.
Right.
That the more we can provide that as an option to our children, the better. And if we have to find another way to do it...
I hope we, we have some plans coming forth very soon on that.
It's been five and a half years that we've had a waiting list at Saratoga, and we started up this other school knowing that we already had a bottleneck, and we haven't done anything about it.
Well, we do have some things coming forward, but again, you know, there's some dollars attached to that, so.
And I think the fact that that particular program at Hawthorne is really getting into the STEM culture is going to help.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. O'Brien?
I guess, you know, I'm all in favor of our STEM programs and things like that, but we seem to lose sight that we have other schools, right? And there's other programs in this district, and there are other good schools. And, you know, it doesn't make sense in a time of declining enrollment to expand a facility. Maybe we should look at the programs we have in our other schools. Maybe they need to be changed or modified a little bit. Or maybe, maybe we're just overblowing the whole STEM thing. I mean, STEM is wonderful, but to just constantly say, "Well, we should expand STEM, we should expand STEM," what about our other schools? Our other schools do count.
We have, I mean, that's one of the reasons we have Quest in Flight, and that's another opportunity for those kids coming out of STEM to get in that type of environment at two other middle schools.
Right, and I think that's the answer. I mean, the thing is, is that we talk about this as if there's not things going on in our other schools that are complementing, complimentary to the STEM program. So it's not a program that's in isolation from the rest of the district, because we've done other things in the district that are STEM-like as well.
I understand what you're saying, but I also referred to the dual-language program as being a powerful program. I also referred to the wonderful work being done at Summit View. Todd mentioned the middle school programs and Inspire that's going on over at North. Just walk down the hall where we have all of our signs down this hallway of the special programs we've got going on. And I don't think, I don't think, you know, we aren't ready to talk about facility, you mentioned adding facilities for this, you know, we're not that close to that, Kurt, so relax. Finance and facilities.
Mr. Edlund?
I would agree with Mr. O'Brien, the fact that we do have a lot of rich programs throughout the district, but the truth of the matter is, academically, this one is the most successful. This, out of the testing scores for students throughout the district, the STEM schools have outperformed. And because of that, it's my belief, and we've all discussed this and agreed, that STEM is not for every child. It takes a specific child with a specific aptitude and wanting to be able to be in that environment. But the bottom line is, parents want it. And because of that, we've had waiting lists at both of our schools since the beginning. If it wasn't successful and parents didn't see the success in it, there wouldn't be waiting lists. So, you know, all the other programs offer different things that parents see as different gifts and abilities in their children. This happens to be another tool to educate kids, and it's been very successful for us. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
Dr. Langill.
I agree, Mr. Edlund, that when you do a pull-up program like a STEM, the chances are, you know, high percentage, that those students will probably test higher than all the rest, because you're looking at a baseline that's different. So I don't disagree with that, but I think that we have to look at that realistically and not, you know, unrealistically. Also, I think, and obviously I come from the humanities, and I've never been opposed to STEM, but I have heard certainly from some of the parents that they feel like in the STEM programs, the humanities sometimes are the sort of poor relations. And so, not that this is a topic we need to discuss fully now, but I will mention it since it's come up. All of Waukesha schools, middle school and high schools, could participate, actually, in this amazing national history competition, which, oh, seven, eight, nine, 10 years ago, under Pat Gardner, they did. Now they don't. There's not a one, there's not an entry from any of the Waukesha schools. So, you know, I think that there are areas in addition, so maybe I'm agreeing with you, Mr. O'Brien, to STEM, that we need to look at maybe ways to enhance, emphasize, and lift up. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thanks to all of you.
That concludes my report, and I didn't mean to get so controversial over it.
That's quite all right.
Usually, I do it as a cheerleader.
And you did. And I think the other comments were equally worthwhile. So thank you very much. Okay, anything, any other questions, discussion, comments? Okay, we'll move on then to the next part of our meeting, and it's the Consent Agenda. Darren Clark, will you please report on any public gifts that we've received?
Yeah, we have three gifts tonight. A $500 donation from Sedexel, Inc. and affiliates. North High School took the Healthy High School Challenge and ranked 72nd out of 4,000 nationwide district or schools, and earned $500 for their effort. The check will be given to North High School Student Recognition Program.
Great.
Aries Industries, Inc. provided a $1,000 gift to be used towards the purchase of a plasma cutting table for metal fabricating program to introduce metal fabrication, to introduce metal fabrication students and processing students to introduce manufacturing skills. And the last gift, Paul and Kathleen Omen gave a $4,000 gift to be used to integrate technology, science, math, and classroom.
Thank you. Okay. Your agenda includes various categories for approval. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, you will have that opportunity. Included in the items for approval are decisions of the expulsion panel, which met on February 11th, 2016, and February 29th, 2016. A confidential communication regarding the details of the expulsion was in your Friday packet, along with the minutes included under item number one, G. If any board member wishes to discuss this item, we have scheduled an executive session at the close of our regular meeting tonight. Approval of the consent agenda confirms full board agreement with the expulsion panel's action. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, please indicate so at this time. Okay, Mr. Edlund, will you please present the consent agenda for approval?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources Committee approved of 11 retirements, one resignation, two leave of absence, and 21 preliminary consideration of non-renewals for administrative purposes. The non-renewals are not performance-based. They do not have to do with procedures for teachers that hold emergency licenses, as well as teachers that sign limited-term or temporary contracts. The information was provided in your packet, and an addendum was placed at your desk. Madam President, I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion, questions? Okay.
Second.
Yes, second. Okay, thank you. Okay, we moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. Questions, discussion? Okay. Stacy, we take the roll call, please.
Steve Edlund?
Aye.
Karen Reincheck?
Aye.
Barbara Brzing?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Ellen Langill?
Aye.
Motion passes eight-zero.
That was my report.
Thank you. Mr. Gray, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. Speaking of special programs, at your desk is a revised Missouri program contract. Another option choice for parents in the district, I believe this meets the criteria set out by the FNF Committee, but I wanted to just make sure that you were able to see that revised agenda before we voted on earlier this evening. The next item, Weldall, one of our great partners in our MAID program, is working with Colin Gilgenbach, one of our students, to develop a plasma cutting table. They are providing steel and materials to build the plasma cutting table. They're participating in the actual construction of the table, working side by side with students. And they're contributing $5,000 for that, for the purchase of the Hypertherm Plasma Cutting Machine, which I have no idea what that is, but I will be learning very quickly. But in any event, thanks to Weldall, they've been a great partner, and they've been a real inspiration for our MAID program. Again, I want to echo my congratulations to Summit View. Jeff Peterson, when he brought that idea forward probably five years ago, you know, I think he had an uphill battle to turn that school around. And again, it's one of our premier program schools in the district. We have charter schools, magnet schools, programs, and partnerships. And again, the idea is to provide as much choice to parents and to students as we possibly can. So we're going to continue to look for those kind of partnerships and programs. If you go down that hallway there and look at the different programs, most of those do have a waiting list. Not everyone, but most of them do have some kind of waiting list. So, you know, if we can get enough programs in our schools, then maybe we don't need to be adding on or be rebuilding buildings. But as Mr. Baumgart noted, it is a good problem to have. Last week was Read Across America, and that was a very interesting week. I was very, very happy to see the number of the schools who invited parents and grandparents in to read to the kids, and it was nice to see everyone there, especially Hadfield had a big, big crowd of grandparents in the reading. And I read the cat and had enough that I probably have it memorized. And I will tell you, every time I read it, it ends up the same, so it doesn't, no change in the ending. The kids get off the hook in the end. And finally, tomorrow night, North High is playing in a sectional game against Whittonell at West High School. So if you are in the neighborhood, we haven't had a team, I think, in sectional for quite a while, so it's good to see North with that success. So that's my report.
Thank you. Okay, moving forward, we'll get into our committee reports. And the first committee report this evening will be the Compensation Committee, and presented by Patricia Madden. Pat?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We have one action item tonight, which is approval of the 216-2017 Supplemental Wage for the Teacher-Employee Group. A salary schedule is not subject to negotiations. In fact, it would be a violation of Act 10 to negotiate the schedule with the Education Association of Waukesha. With the salary schedule that was implemented in 2014-15 school year, the board approved step and lane advancements in 2015-16. Using the approved salary advancement process, which was approved in August of 2015, the committee recommends approving steps and lanes best, based on satisfactory teacher performance for the 2016-17 year. The portion of the employee handbook that describes the process used for applying supplemental pay was included in your packets. Madam Chairman, I move to approve the supplemental wage increases for 2016-17 for employees of the Teacher-Bargaining Group as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second, please? Is there a second?
I would second. Go ahead.
Second?
Well, whatever, but I was just going to ask, is there a second?
Okay.
Well, do we want to say 2016-17 school year? Or do we really mean that? I just thought, for clarity, I just wondered.
That's beginning of next school year, right? That's when it would be effective? That would be effective next school year?
No, but we just put the years, and so it just, just for clarity, I was wondering, we do mean the 16-17 school year?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, so if the minutes show that, then we're fine.
Okay.
Otherwise, it's a little...
Yeah. No. Fiscal year, and some of our teachers...
Fiscal year, whatever we want to say. It's just, I think for clarity, it's good to put one or the other. Okay.
Ms. Edstrom?
Yes, I want to make just one correction on the executive summary. Under financial impact, the supplemental wage increase is estimated to be 1.22% at 1.3.
Ah. Thank you for correcting that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we accept the approval for the 2016-2017 supplemental wages for the Teacher-Employee Group. So any questions, discussion? Mr. Edlund?
Thank you, Ms. President. The total amount that we're showing is $724,140,000. Is that wages or total package?
That's the package for the lien and the supplemental wage.
Do we know the total dollar impact?
With...
SSI, pension?
No, I do not know, have those figures. I don't think we've ever included that as part of the approval.
I brought that up a number of times, so just for budgeting purposes, so we know how much we're actually giving in a raise?
So this is wages, Ms. Madden, not benefits?
That is correct.
Okay. Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, I think it's important to provide some clarity as we go through this. I mean, essentially, all we're doing is we're allowing people to move on the schedule, and the cost of moving on the schedule, relative to the schedule, not including the other peripheral things, is $724,149. We actually ran about a $3 million surplus this year, we reported at FNF, so we can afford to allow people to move on the schedule this year. If it's an affordability issue, I don't think that's a question. When you have a $3 million budget surplus this year, depending on what happens in terms of changing the school funding going next year, we're likely to have another surplus the following year. And certainly, we can absorb this schedule movement cost, which is at the discretion of the board. So what we're doing tonight is saying, the board's using their discretion and either agreeing to approve or disapprove the movement on the schedule, essentially, and we're giving it a rough estimated dollar cost for that movement per the schedule, not all the extra stuff that Mr. Edlund talked about, which should probably add another, oh, another 10% or something like that.
About 12%.
About 12.
And health, we don't, it's tough to cost because we're self-funded, so it's hard to, and our health costs have stayed, they've been pretty much static or dropping, you know, with our new plans. So you're looking probably, yeah, 10% to 12% over and above that $724 as the total package cost.
The added cost would not be health, it'd be Social Security and retirement.
One half the retirement. It's one half the retirement. So, yeah, so you're looking about 10% to 12%. Somewhere in that range.
That's the whole point of me bringing this up, is that when we put dollar numbers on here, they're not representative of the actual cost of the benefit. And we really need that transparency, especially for budgeting purposes. I understand we had a $3 million surplus, but we've also exceeded the revenue cap, you know, going forward for another six years. So through the energy program that we decided to take on. So, you know, at some point, we have to say, you know, we keep going surplus, 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 surplus every year, do we simply just say, "Well, fine, we can just give whatever we want in raises?" And, you know, that's fine, but I mean, kind of get what I'm saying? I mean, it's nice to have a surplus every year. Don't get me wrong, but we built up our rainy day fund to the point, we're fully funded, we're overfunded on our health insurance now. At some point, I think our budget has to be a little bit more fair to the taxpayers in our community.
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Edlund.
Our budget is fair to the taxpayers in our community, and we have to be fair to our employees, and we're not doing anything more than what we proposed we'd do with them when we set up the salary schedule. So we're really kind of keeping a commitment we made to them relative to executing on the salary schedule, subject to board approval. It's not some unmeasured, uncontrolled process. It's actually very controlled. So we're just not throwing money at the educators. We're actually just basically paying them per their merits of moving upon the schedule. And I think it's about half the people are actually benefiting in movement right now this year. So it's not only about half of them are getting the benefit of this. The other, the other part of this is going to be in the bargaining, which is separate from this, which will be a much lower dollar amount, really, in terms of what's for the rest of the employees. So when you factor it all in, with this amount plus what they can get from the bargaining side, it's a very low percent increase in the overall cost of our employment costs for our total employee group.
This is in the budget.
Ms. Madden?
This also was in the proposed budget.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Ms. Reinacek?
And the teachers that are getting this are the ones that have been, they're being compensated for teaching classes, their, the student performance. That's why they're getting this. Is that correct?
Right. And in essence, most of the teachers that are receiving this are the ones that are on the bottom end of the salary schedule, the newer teachers. Those that are in the final lane, they're either, if you look at the schedule and the way it was executed, you're either at a blockout step, or you haven't been able to move a lane. So our higher compensated teachers aren't getting this raise. It's really our lower compensated teachers that have been with the district maybe two or three years out of college, and really just haven't gotten a raise to amount to anything over that period of time. And if you look at a four-year degree with three years of experience and not getting raises for kids that have student loans to pay, you know, our employees do have student loans to pay back, to hold them at almost nothing for a pay raise year after year, which is what we've been doing as we build up these surpluses, didn't really seem quite right.
Mr. Edlund?
I, just a little disagreement with that. We have been giving all of our employees raises every single year that I've been on the board. There has never been a year when we have said, I'm sorry, we can't give you a raise. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, ready for the vote? Stacy, we'll take the roll call, please.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Steve Edlund?
Aye.
Ellen Langel?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Barbara Brzink?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Pass is eight zero. Thank you, Ms. Madden. All right, next, we will have the Policy Committee report presented by Dr. Langel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, the Policy Committee has one action item and one discussion item. And you have the same, I think, in your packet and on your desk. So first, the action item, which came before us at our February meeting, is revision to policy 8343, Board Agenda Preparation. Language is added, and you can see it in your copy, that allows for recommendations for future discussions or action items for the full board or for a committee. We have referenced this very carefully, and so you can look at that. After we presented this earlier, we didn't get any feedback or corrections. So I bring it forward for its second time and move for approval of these revisions to policy 8343.
Okay. Is there a second, please? Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Baumgart? Any questions? Okay. Stacy, we'll take the roll call, please.
Ellen Langel?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Barbara Brzink?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Steve Edlund?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Okay, we have no information items tonight, but we do have a discussion item. And on your desk, as well as in your packet, you'll see some material referencing that. And this is just the first presentation coming to you. The Policy Committee spent really a great deal of time, questions and answers about this with Richard Zimmerman from Neola. And Neola, as you see in your packet and the handouts, is a policy, essentially kind of a reference and reform bureau, which he is one of the leaders of. And he would be our service individual. If you look in your packet, and of course, I always like to look at what acronyms stand for. So you can see that this started in Ohio. So it's Northeast Ohio Learning Associates from years ago. But it's now really nothing to do directly with Ohio, although that's where it started. In your folder, too, you also have a client list, which is just Wisconsin. And you can see there are many, many, many school districts like us, bigger than us, many smaller than us, on the Neola client list in Wisconsin. And what we're looking at doing on policy, and we'll be considering this again and bringing it forward to you, is retaining the services of Neola, and their consultant, and specifically this Mr. Zimmerman. To, what they do is they essentially review all of your policies en masse. So obviously, that takes some time. And they go through series by series. So they go through the, you know, 2,000 series and so forth and so on. And then what they do is that they have a computer base, based on research, that tells them that these policies, vis a vis court decisions on the national or state level, vis a vis legislation on the national or state level, might be outdated. And so then they're very helpful in supplying to us which policies might need to be updated or revised, and also helping us with language to that end. So it's an incredible service. And so we are looking at possibly moving in that direction. And I think both Dr. Gray and Joe Cooker are on board with this. In fact, I know Joe Iskis, he brought it to us. It's a very modest amount, and Zimmerman did answer that. But can I turn that part over to you, Joe?
Sure. For the initial, the initial startup, policy for administrative guidelines and for Richard Services, annually, it's about a $2,500 commitment on the, times plus a year, pertinent policy that's been, our process where policy update, you know, started with administration, ordered to the whole board, it's gone back to committee approval. That process stays the same, policy and law changes. Sometimes those things happen rather quickly. And oftentimes, they're not communicated well to the school. In order to stay compliant and stay on top of things.
So it sounds like a wonderful service. I think we're all, you know, looking forward to hearing more. But I think we heard a great deal. He was with us an hour or more, and we were talking about the ins and outs of it. And the other benefit, too, just to add on to that, is when, as the process goes, and then when the process is done, we as a district will have uploaded electronically all, and indexed, all of our policies, existing, reformed, revised, whatever, which will be a fabulous tool then, going forward.
Updated policy manual. Well, you'll be able to cross-reference policy that was approved tonight, cross-references to other policies across the system.
I'm realistic.
You'll easily access those. Which takes what we currently have.
And I want to add, too, that they don't write the policy. Administration does, they just simply provide us the information that we need to know, the updating and so on. So it's still, nothing really changes at the Policy Committee level. It's just that we have the service that keeps us updated on, on laws and changes. We don't get that. There's really no service right now that provides every single one. I mean, we'll get things from the Southeastern Wisconsin Schools Alliance, but those are things, changes to voucher laws, Equalization Eight, those kind of things that have a, an impact on what we're trying to do, not so much some of the other obscure laws that get passed that we don't get noticed on. But there's, it does not at all change what, how administration collaborates with the board on the policies.
No, and I didn't mean to imply, and I'm sorry, I get you.
Oh, right, right.
But it did, except that he did say, and I think it's helpful, and we actually spent a lot of time on this, that when one of our policies is indeed outdated, vis a vis court decisions or what have you, they can help by supplying sample language, which we can adopt if we choose. We can tweak as we choose. So obviously, the ultimate responsibility is ours, but they can be really helpful in terms of careful ways to architect it. So just to support what you're saying. Mr. O'Brien?
I'm trying to figure out why this is needed. I mean, WASB has always been our guidance for needs to update policy.
They don't do much anymore. I mean, it's not strong. It just, it hasn't been. I mean, they don't provide this kind of service at all.
Well, I can understand they don't provide this kind of service, but I wonder if this kind of service seems to be well above and beyond. I mean, we got a policy manual, a lot of it doesn't have anything to do with any sort of statute. It's just how the board conducts business and...
And that won't change, right?
And that won't change. So there's, there's very few. And then, you know, these are our local school districts. I mean, we are local. I mean, we're not, the federal government doesn't clamp down on us completely. And we do have local control. We do have to be compliant with federal law. But there can't be that many court decisions that get passed on every year that you have to rewrite policy around.
Not necessarily court decisions, but federal and state law changes. I mean, Title IX, I think, changes every year. And we find out about it by surprise sometimes, because we don't have a service that gives us that information. So...
Mr. Cook, in?
Policy templates.
Starts with us, goes to...
I'm going to agree with Mr. O'Brien on this one, just from the standpoint that this is, there's a much broader picture here. We're the seventh largest district in the state. What does a small community do? This is something that really should be handled at DPI level and filtered down to districts throughout the state. I don't see us needing to take on this expense, because we're not the only public school district in the entire state of Wisconsin. You know, WASB, we pay WASB for things like this. And Gary Roche, we also pay him to review policy for us, do we not?
But yeah, but that, that's a lot more expensive than, than this would be.
But do this, does this company represent us if we get into an issue?
Yes.
Yeah.
Challenge on the policy.
Yeah.
Okay.
But again, I'm going to go back to, we're just one school district. There's hundreds of school districts across the state that I think are more open to policy challenges than we are, just because they're smaller districts.
Neola does represent or provide service to...
That's...
Out 40% of the districts, they are providing.
That's kind of where I'm going with this, though, is that why should each school district replicate the services that should be coming down from DPI?
Because each one is...
I, I think primarily because there are enough differences from district to district. We are significantly different, for example, compared to Milwaukee. And so we have a number of issues that, that, you know, any, any kind of district that has a number of different charter schools, right there, you've got tremendous amounts of policy on who gets in, who doesn't, how they operate, and so on. So I think that's probably the biggest difference, is just the, the fact that we are, we are so much different than, than everyone else, I would say, even in Waukesha County.
Mr. Edlund, if I may, you know, join in. I worked in two school districts after I retired from Waukesha. And it was of interest to me to see how different the two school districts' policies were from ours. Really. So every school district writes their policies based on their needs, based on their community needs, et cetera. But there really is a difference.
And I would agree, if we did have that kind of service from DPI, but we, we don't. We don't have that.
Mr. Edlund and then Ms. Reinacek?
Ryan?
I know we look a lot alike.
I mean, Mr. O'Brien, I'm sorry.
It's the beard thing.
It's the beard, right, Steve? Yeah.
Yeah, you look alike.
Look, I, I suppose this will, I mean, it's nice it's been brought up for discussion, and I don't know if it'll come back for approval. But I have a problem with someone coming to you and say, yeah, well, there's 130 other districts doing it. And by the way, it's only X amount of dollars. And it's only, yeah, it's, it is, it's not that much money. But it sounds to me like a way to make money that we're not getting that much return out of, from what I, familiar with our policy. I mean, I, it, how, what did we spend last year for policy review by, by, what's our average spend by, for policy review to our lawyers? I bet you it doesn't, I bet you, I bet you it's very little. We don't go to our lawyers very often to modify policy.
More than you think, but I don't, I wouldn't know that, that dollar amount off the top of my head.
Yeah. So I, I know it's a small amount, and it sounds like we're tripling over small pennies. But I mean, every penny does count. Ask a taxpayer, right? And so I, I don't understand why this is something that's such a big deal in terms of doing it, but...
Ms. Reinacek?
I just first have to say, I'm enjoying this discussion, because you two never agree on anything. It's so delightful, this last five minutes. It's just like...
I stepped up to the plate.
A lot of these, a lot of these questions were brought up at the policy meeting, including, shouldn't this come from DPI? Shouldn't they get the information which comes out of the meetings from the Capitol, and then make sure everybody's on board? And that connection is not happening. And I forgot how, or if I heard, the gentleman, what is his name again? Mr. Zimmerman?
Oh, Zimmerman.
He was saying that there's so many that are passed that DPI does not, whether, how would they know which, which districts would need that information for their policies? And how would they write them all? There was this big, we talked for about an hour and a half on all of these questions. And, and I, too, had that question, Steve, like, why should we have to pay for this service that should be given to us? Joe, do you remember the, the actual lineage of how that works?
I think you're talking about when a law is passed and who gets the updates. DPI does not get any updates on, at any time, moment, particularly, you know, time when, when the legislator is trying to wrap up a session and, and things are being passed. An example of that, earlier this year, there was some notices that needed to be updated. A lot of that stuff came very quick. Policies, Neola, Neola provides that information to you. State does not notify the districts of all policies. Law changes, then, that would need to be updated in policy. Neola can provide us that, that opportunity. Not have that quick, clear, from a legislative decision at the state, own Department of Public Instruction, to try to stay proactive with policy. This is it.
Barbara?
Yes.
Yeah, it's an interesting conversation. But I have, I have some concerns on the other side. I think, first of all, I think administration is in the best position to understand whether or not this is a needed tool or not. That's their job. Our job is, yeah, the money is part of it. The other thing that's bothering me is, we are looking at $2,500 a year, right? I think Todd will be able to figure out whether or not the law firms are charging us that much money or not, you know. Beyond that, I'm afraid the board is getting into a micromanagement of a need of administration here. And it really troubles me. Every time we move into the direction of we telling you how to do your job, I don't think that's the board's job. I know this is going to cause, cause a debate. But if you go back to what the school board is about, it's about governance, it's not about micromanaging. It's about direction, it's about the budget. And we're crossing that line again, in my mind. I have to trust administration to say, I need something, can you get it for me? And that's, that's what we've heard. Administration says, this is, this is a real need. They wouldn't be looking for this if, if it wasn't needed. You know, they're smarter than that, I hope. Anyway, you know, we as the board don't know what's going on every day up in Joe's office and Todd's office and stuff like that. And once in a while, we have to just trust them that if they need something, it's the truth. They've never let us down on that. So that's what, that's my position on this. See, I told you it would be controversial.
That's okay. It's good. Mr. O'Brien?
An expenditure of $15,000 and an ongoing expenditure of $2,500 every year, it, you know, we, we look at $100 expenditures that, that come across FNF. I mean, every, every single one. And then we review them and scrutinize them and ask questions about them and then approve them. So I guess that's what we do. Whether it's micromanaging or not, the taxpayers expect us to watch what's spent, even in $15,000 or $2,000. So I guess that's what we do, whether it's micromanaging or not. The taxpayers expect us to watch what's spent, even in fifteen thousand dollars or two thousand dollars. And know that that's money well spent. I, I don't want to micromanage the administration either. This particular one, I'm having a hard time with. I realize it's a small amount, but I just don't quite get why we're doing it. That's all.
Mr. Edlin.
I, I, that's, I think that's part of our job. I, I, I do trust the administration to bring ideas forward to us all the time. But it's our job to review every one of those recommendations and to scrutinize them and determine if it's sometimes a real need or a want. And that's what I like to separate is what do we really need and what do we really want? What starts out as a twenty-five hundred dollar contract now could easily blossom into a five thousand dollar a year contract, which still isn't going to break the bank, but that's how these things start out. We, we realized when we shopped out our busing contract after twenty years that we were able to get a bit better deal. And so that's why we have to be diligent all the time and review, review expenses. And I, again, I just agree with Mr. O'Brien. I'm not so sure the, the benefit.
Dr. Langella.
Well, thank you, and I think it's been a great discussion. Um, oh, did we overlook you?
Uh, no, I mean, it sounds like you're closing out the debate though. I have a question about the actual program, not about the board's role in it.
Oh, no, and you go ahead. I didn't even know you had your hand up. So you go first.
Okay. Is there only one level of service that they provide? You just got to go, or do they offer different levels of service? They offer seven?
They provide the overall policy review.
Okay.
All updates, whatever's needed. They also. They also will help you develop your administrative guidelines associated with those policies. And then they will also do the web hosting for it. And that can come each individually. You can do just policy. You could do just guidelines. You could, you know, or not just guidelines. If you did the policy, the, the guidelines, I don't want to say are optional because they do give us direction on how to operate on a day-to-day basis. So you would want to review the two in hand. So there is that one level of service. When you get into that annual review, it is a, you know, i- if you're Waukesha or if you're a district of five hundred kids, it is the same rate for policy because policy, you know, is policy. It's just that.
And then the, I'm assuming the digital version of the policy, is that hosted by us or them?
It's hosted by them linked to us.
Okay. Is there a search feature that's included with it where, for instance, I could type in bully and every policy that mentions it will come up?
You would find every policy, every guideline, and then you'd also be able to see where it could be linked into a student handbook. You'd be able to see how it's all referenced.
Is there a charge for that? You also asked that question.
I'm assuming that the search feature is, comes with the electronic document, but.
It does.
Okay.
And it's, and that'll be open to the public?
Correct, yes.
Um, and then the only other thing is I would love to know how much we spend on lawyers for policy. I mean, twenty-five hundred dollars a year, I mean. Lawyers can't even walk into the office for twenty-five hundred dollars a year.
That's about five to six hours of.
I was going to say, but.
By a partner and an associate, so, yeah.
So I would love to know how many hours though, um, we are sending our policy stuff. Because I, I would assume that we're sending.
We do.
We could go law, I mean, we'd have to go through every, every. Every invoice.
But then again, once we find that information out, it's not like we're going to get rid of Gary, so.
Right.
Like to know what, maybe what's coming off his plate if we go with the, and I'm not saying I'm against it or for it. I just, a little bit more information, I'd love to know about what we're spending on that and then what will be off of Gary's plate potentially with going to the service. That'd be great to find out, unpack it, or it may take a couple of weeks to come up with that audit, but that'd be great to know.
Mr. O'Brien.
This was offered for discussion. I mean, that's, I mean, we should be able to discuss it, but it won't circumvent the need to use counsel. An example, you know, controversial subject that came across our plate a couple of years ago was some books. And our policy came into play there and we had to consult our attorneys relative to how we managed to review those books and following our policy and, and whether our policy should be revised and all that stuff. This group's not going to replace that. You're still going to need that level of contact with someone, with our local counsel. I don't see them coming in and giving you a, the type of guidance we got from Gary Rush.
I would respond to that because I think you're right in every instance, it's not going to obviate the need for attorneys. That certainly is true. However, given your example and given the quality of the local counsel that we essentially are, you know, connected with through this, they are, and I think Gary Rush is fabulous, but they are also a very fabulous law firm. So what we're looking at here is an initial outline that maybe does sound like a lot. And I don't object to the discussion of this at all. I mean, I think it's been a great discussion and we should do that. And we'll consider it going forward on policy, get you some of the statistics. But we have to also remember that once our policies are indeed updated and uploaded, if there is an issue, then we do have, in a sense, almost legal insurance. I mean, is really what we're saying. And is, as Pat said, you know, you can blow through twenty-five hundred dollars in no time at all if indeed you then do have to go to court. So on certain issues, this would make that unnecessary. We would be protected legally on various issues. And that's really, I think, a comfort and a wise move. So this will come back to, to you and hopefully with some more specifics that you've asked for. But I, I appreciate all the comments and discussions, so.
If I, if I may add, as a former administrator in the building, that policy book was very, very important in helping me administrate my school, setting guidelines, rules, et cetera. I'm working with parents, communicating, you know, the district expectations, et cetera. And it, it does have to be up to date and I think we've done a, a pretty good job, you know, with, without outside professional help. But it is important that we have updated policy and correct policy.
Right, and just to add to that real quickly, I've been on policy for quite a while and.
Me too, from the very beginning.
But it strikes me sometimes we'll have a policy revision coming forward because maybe Joe did notice something or your predecessor did. And then we'll look at, because our policies all have the dates when it was written and when it was.
Yes, and when it was updated.
And sometimes we'll get it and it was like nineteen ninety-nine, you know, and we're thinking, whoa, we're a little behind on all this. And so the whole first expenditure is to bring everything into the twenty-first century in two thousand and sixteen. And that's going to be, I think, a great comfort to know that we're not so out of date on some of these things. So that's another step.
Well, you may recall, as a policy committee, we used to every year say, okay, this year we're going to do the one hundred series and this year we're going to do the two. And so over a period of a year, two years or so, we would have gone through that entire policy book. Well, they're going to go through the entire policy in a, in much, much, much less time and perhaps and hopefully more accurately than we would knowing what they know about state law, federal law, et cetera. So, you know, it could be a good thing. It is expensive, yeah, but it, it may be good so that we're in compliance with everything that we're expected to be, so.
But thank you for all your comments. Oh, another question.
Yes. Have they looked at any of our policies? I mean, usually a service like this will, you know, do a preliminary, thumb through of the policies and give examples of what we are deficient in.
They have not looked at our policies yet because we have not entered into a contract with them. Once we enter into the contract, they will do a complete review of all policy.
And Joe, maybe you could tell them Richard's background. I don't know if that helps, but.
Richard is a retired school superintendent from the Rip, Ripon School District. I believe he was there for nine or ten years.
Yeah, I, I've, I've worked with him. He's very high integrity, high, high detailed individual. So I, I mean, that's why I'm very comfortable with his representation.
Okay.
Ms. Renacek.
Thank you. I thought they took one of, in that, in our folder at policy, at the policy meeting, we had three copies of the same policy. I thought it was one of ours, one from another school district and one from another.
Correct. There was a, he, he grabbed, he had just done a policy revision in a district of similar size to us. And the policy was on obje, uh, controversial topics in the classroom. And, and he had our policy next to what would be the proposed policy in, in, in the district that he's currently working in, along with a template that would drive that policy, along with administrative guidelines for that policy. And then also a form that could be linked to that policy that if a teacher was going to embark, you know, during, for instance, political season on a, a political debate in their class, they would be able to outline what they were talking about and what the pertinent aspects of the conversation is to their lesson, to the curriculum. And then it gives some structure and some guideline to that. And, and so they did look at one of our policies and we, and we did discuss it at length in the meeting.
Good point. Thank you.
Okay. Any further?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
That concludes our, our report and we do meet next week on Tuesday, the fifteenth. Boy, that came around fast.
Did.
Yeah, and so we are done with our report for tonight.
If there's no more questions or discussion.
I don't think so.
I'm good.
You're good?
Thanks for asking.
Okay. Thank you very much and thank you all for your discussion and your input. It's very valuable. That, that is our job as school board members, that we should ask questions and make sure that what we're doing is right for our district. Okay, moving forward, Technology Committee, Mr. McCaffrey.
I have no report this evening.
Okay. Finance and Facilities, Mr. O'Brien.
Okay. Well, we had a meeting Monday night, March ninth. We had three action items. First action item was the approval of the, of the continuation of the Montessori program. Committee reviewed a new three-year agreement for the continuation of the Montessori program for a five-year-old kindergarten. The new agreement provides for the continuation of the program from age five K through third grade. And it's a three-year, uh, it's three-year expan, extension of the agreement versus five that was initially in our packets. The committee approved the continuation of Montessori program for a period of three years and I so move.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Questions? Mr. Edlin?
I voted no on this in committee and, and I just wanted to explain because I do not mean for my vote to in any way be reflective of Montessori's programs. And they're, they're an excellent educational institution, very well respected, very popular in our community. My problem with the whole arrangement that we have here is more in relation to the amount that Montessori receives and the amount that the school district gets. And this is probably more of an issue with the state of Wisconsin than it is with here at the local level. However, the question that I brought up is why, if we're paying them eighty-two hundred dollars, why are we getting paid eighteen hundred and seventy-two dollars from state, state and local taxpayers?
And, and, yeah, I mean, that's just how the revenue control works.
Correct, and that.
I mean, we could pay them more and then we would, but I, I don't know that that would be.
Well, what it comes down to for me is what, what it's costing to educate a child. And if they're able to educate a child for eighty-two hundred dollars, why are, why is Waukesha School District collecting another eighteen hundred and seventy-two dollars? Now, we had, you know, the, the example of each student has an IEP or not each student, specific students. Some students require an IEP. However, we provide that service even to parochial schools, do we not?
Uh, not, not normally, no.
I, I, I remember an example that Ms. Wimmer had when she was here of a, a child leading a, a speech program at Trinity, and there was an issue that the parent had because the parent was required to take the kid out of that school and bring them over to, to White Rock. So we are providing those services to local schools. I believe we receive federal funds for that and that's why we have to do that. Right, so I'm not so sure that that is necessarily the, going to make up that eighteen hundred and seventy-two dollars per student. I, again, I go back to state law. Why are we doing this? So.
Mr. Cook.
In, in referencing the, the, a service in a private school, there's something called equitable participation, which is a part of the federal flow-through grant. And it's all based off of percentage of students that are attending student, uh, school in a parochial school within the district. And that comes, translates into a dollar amount. So for kids that fall into the three to five-year-old range who are attending school at a parochial school, those students would be eligible to receive speech up to an expended dollar amount by the district. So the, the excess cost and the, the requirement to provide service really falls into a federal requirement around the grant dollars associated with special education.
The other piece, I mean, I, I don't know exactly how much it, it does cost to educate students in Montessori. They may have other sources of revenue that we're, we're not aware of. But that's an average cost for the entire district. And we have, I mean, we have high schools, which, you know, they go through, through eighth grade. And so high schools typically are, are far more expensive than the average per pupil versus elementary, which is, which is less expensive. So that, that, that accounts for some of that difference. But I, you know, I mean, there, there will probably be some years where we might provide services that make up all that, that eighteen hundred and other years not.
Mr. Edlin.
Right, I thi, it's always important. The details do matter. I mean, when Mr. Cook was describing the federal program as three to five-year-olds and we're providing services, access to services at Montessori because they do remain our kids. They are counted in our, they are our kids. We're just contracting educational services through this partnership of Montessori. But we still have to provide all the services that we'd normally provide any other child in our district in terms of special needs type stuff. And no other school gets that. So we, the illustration at F and F was not every child's going to take advantage of that at the Montessori school or not every child's going to need that. But the cost of that far exceeds it. When you do have to do it, probably far exceeds that eighteen hundred bucks that you have for one child. And use the example, it's like if you get a Y membership and you don't go to the Y, you still pay the membership. And they're having access to those services. Montessori values that access. It's one of the features that makes this program attractive to, to them, is the fact they can have those services. But I, I think, I, I, I don't disagree with Mr. Edlin's overall point that we should be cognizant of how much it's costing versus how much we're receiving. But I would say that the cost associated with the services we provide are reasonably accounted for with the eighteen hundred bucks.
And, and again, the, the, the other benefit that we discussed Monday night was that when we can count these kids, that also increases our equalization aid, which reduces property taxes dollar for dollar. So that's, that's one of the advantages too, that actually is, was more appealing to myself, being able to have a program that actually helped us with the equalization aid.
Edlin.
Ms. Langella was first. Go ahead.
Um, Ms. Dr. Langella.
Thank you. Um, just a question and this is sort of operational. As I look at, it looks like one D one on the contract. And so I'm just asking the genesis of this, but, because it's sort of an interesting thing, even in terms of American history, much less American law. Montessori School of Waukesha shall not advertise, which obviously would be written and therefore verifiable, nor make claim or, or make claim that the program is free. Did a lawyer look at that?
That was an issue that we've had.
That's a gag rule, isn't it?
Well, no, no, but this is an issue that we've, we've run into before.
Right, I understand.
Because, and, and we, you know, people have, have called up such, saying, well, it's not free. It's going to cost, you know, state tax dollars and I'm, so that's why we've said we, we do not. In fact, any of our partners with 4K, we asked them not to. You, you can say it's, it's, there's no tuition to attend, but you can't, we, we don't like them to say it's free because it's, it's not free.
I understand that and I just wondered how that had come about because it does seem like that's not real legalese. You know, we're talking about verbally, they ought to indicate perhaps that it is a non-tuition. I don't know how we want to say it. I don't want to wordsmith it, but it just seemed kind of strange.
Well, it's not, it's not a gag. It's, I, I take issue with your characterization of it.
Okay.
It's a contract and contracts present guidelines when you enter into a con, contract that provides constraints. And part of the constraint of the con, of this contract is that one line in there. Now, we could wordsmith a little bit, but certainly that line is a legal line in a contract. You know, you can, you can, you can contractually restrict.
Oh, absolutely. I don't disagree with that. I was just thinking the way it was worded was sort of strange, but.
Yeah, if we did it, if we did it without a contract and demanded that, no, that'd be different. But we have a contract and that's the purpose of a contract.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Mr. Edlin.
Yes, I, I just wanted to go back a, a little step and talk about the IEPs that are provided to our students that are there. Most of those for particularly speech are for younger students who, you know, it's a corrective thing early on. However, before, we were claiming these as our students, Montessori had to provide the service. And they contracted with, I guess, for organizations like, like CSUS. This allows them to not have to contract out because they get the service from, from us. So whether we were partnered with them or not, they would still need the service. So we're just, in addition to the eighty-two hundred dollars, they also get IEPs. I just don't understand the state law and the fact that it, it's a private school, not a parochial school, a private school. But we get to claim those children, even though those parents made the choice to send their children to that school. It's not a public school. And so, I don't understand the thought process behind allowing the state, the state allowing us to claim them as our students.
I've been through, right on up through Tony Evers on this one, I've talked to the DPI attorneys, I've talked to their chief financial guy, all of them, I've talked to our attorneys and all of them come to the same conclusion that you can contract out for private services, just like when we, if we might send a student to Rogers, it's a private organization, that obviously is a lot more than $8,200, but again, we're able to count that student and that student stays as part of the district. So, under that same premise, is this, is this new one unusual? Yeah, I mean, it's a different, it's a different format, but I think with what's coming down from the state, we need to look at those things to remain competitive and I think it, as long as the DPI has said this is good to go and our attorneys do, I think that's where, I don't know, I wouldn't know where else to turn to, to get, you know, any additional...
It's no different than the 4K program, when you contracted and partnered with, you know, for a 4K, it's the same concept, it's just that now you're expanding it to other grades, so there's plenty of precedent to support this activity. You, any person may object to the expansion of this beyond 4K, but the 4K program is basically the same thing, you're subcontracting to private providers, in one case La Casa for a period of time, but several providers and so this is, this is no different. Montessori was one of those contractors too in our 4K program, so it's just expanding the grade program to it.
Mr. Edlund?
I think we're comparing apples to oranges now because Montessori is a school that provides, we don't send our teachers to Montessori for the K4, do we?
Some, we have some, there's three models and there's Model 2, we do send our teachers to a private school.
To Montessori?
Yeah, not to Montessori, but to another, you know, in the 4K.
That's what I'm getting at, is this is, this is an apples to oranges scenario because they have their own method of teaching, they pay for that method of teaching. So, this is not like we're sending somebody into another program, our teachers into another program where we have the expense of the teachers in that K4 program, nothing like that. And as we're expanding this program, now we're going grade by grade per year is the progression of this, this laid-out contract. So, you know, sending children to Rogers is completely different. Those are children that have special needs and we recognize that and that's why we pay a fortune to send them to these schools because we don't want them falling through the cracks and we're a great community for doing that. This is a totally different scenario. This is, this is comparing first grade to first grade, just different teaching methods and we're doing it classroom at a time. So, again, this is a private school with their own curriculum, their own methodology of teaching, nothing to do with public education, but now we've thrown them into that mix. So, I don't understand how the state would consider program that they have, being a private school, as being a public school because they're receiving public school dollars. It just doesn't make sense to me.
Well, I mean, the same thing with the vouchers, I mean, we had 69 kids go to voucher schools, we paid about $7,800 per student and we got $9,000. Now, I mean, they corrected that because it was a silly situation, but I mean, that is, that is, that is the law, you know, we, I guess, did we take advantage of this partnership? Yes, you know, but I mean, the extra dollars over and above the $8,200, you know, those are students we probably would not have gotten anyways. It does help, it provides the partnership piece and it does help with the equalization aid, as does the voucher. I mean, this, this looks a lot like the current voucher law, except that now it's dollar for dollar or whatever dollar we pay out, that's what we receive back, so.
And that's taken my conversation full circle, that I have a problem with this and the way that the state has gone about this, so that's all I wanted to say in the beginning, that was my whole point.
Dr. Langels and Mr. Baumgart?
Well, just very quickly, I think that certainly the Montessori approach, Montessori method, which I'm learning every day more about, has so much validity, but I think also school districts across the country, including Milwaukee and other public schools, have Montessori schools.
That's right.
So, it's, you know, maybe not as far out as some people might think in left field, I hear that and I think, no. Plus, there are metrics that we've applied, obviously, for them to achieve, you know, certain goals, so we have accountability that, you know, I think is good and that's not a problem. So, you know, I don't want to say Montessori's now mean line because of course it isn't, it is a really unique philosophy and approach, but it certainly falls within the parameters of what we approve of and what we do and what the public system in this state, certainly in this country, approve of.
Thank you for that. Mr. Baumgart?
It seems the only objection we've had this evening is that the state law doesn't seem to fit somebody. I don't think we have the ability in this room to change the state law this evening, so I'd like to get on with the discussion, closing and... Yeah, I can call the question.
You're calling the question.
Thank you, I'll call the question.
Did you make the motion earlier?
Yes, it's been moved in second.
Oh, good.
Right, right. Okay, Stacy, roll call.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Ellen Langels?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Barbara Brzink?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Steve Edlund?
No.
Okay, motion passes 7-1.
Might turn out to be a long report tonight, you know, that was just the first one, I got two more to go here. The next one is approval of equipment acquisition with Apple Inc. The committee was presented with an equipment acquisition financing summary and a replacement schedule for Waukesha 1. Waukesha 1 is the instruction plan to ensure a one-to-one relationship for students and teaching staff. The Waukesha 1 program has been fully implemented over the last several years and this purchase of 3,000 iPads and 20 MacBook Airs from Apple represents the first significant replacement equipment cycle. Just a little bit more background before I make the motion, we were planning to do this on a financed way and then we decided that with the funds available due to our surplus this year, we could save financing money and actually do this cheaper by just outright buying them. So, really, this motion results in us, instead of leasing these components, paying for them over three years, financing them, we're paying for them out front right away. The committee approved the equipment acquisition with Apple Inc. as presented and I so move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we approved the equipment acquisition with Apple. Any discussion? Dr. Langels?
I just have a question and again, you guys are the tech experts. Going forward, well, all of you, maybe more than me, I don't know, is this in the country typical of a three-year sundown? I mean, is that what we're really looking at for everything?
I guess I could let Mr. McCaffrey answer, but what, what we're doing here is, you know, we can afford to buy them over three years and then in years four and five, we may not make any purchases and because they'll, we've been getting like five years' life out of these things so far. And, but, but we do have enough money to buy a third every year. So, we're unique, we have the dollars to do this and we have, we have the infrastructure to do this and there's not many other school districts in the country that have, have what we have thanks to a referendum that was done many, many years ago.
I read that.
And, and that created the infrastructure that put this district where they are today and, and then thanks to the effort of the administration that we put in place that have helped build this program.
I appreciate your answer and your nodding and I understand that, but I guess that I'm going to sound like Steve Edlund, the fact that we have money...
Don't faint.
What a nice...
A progressive and a conservative on the same side, I love it.
But, I mean, when I hear an answer where somebody says, "We're doing it because we have the money," you know, I don't think you probably mean it that way, but when I hear that, I'm thinking, whoa, is that a good reason?
There's a couple of other things at play here. The new devices that we're getting have a lot more computing power because as we increase our offerings at the digital level...
Right.
We're going to need some more computing power. So, the way that it was set up was a three-and-a-half to four-year changeout. So, these are the, this is actually the second part of this changeout. The first one was the pilot program at West where we changed all those units out and then this is, and that was the pilot program, this is the way of one and two. So, right now, it's a combination of more computing power. And you also have to take into account, because the units are ours when we're off lease, they have to have some sort of value because we're going to want to recoup some of our costs, which we did. We cooped quite a large sum of money when we sold the ones from the pilot program. So, there's, there's that whole, you don't want to come offline with a piece of junk that isn't going to be useful in the resale market and you have to also weigh that with what are your computing, what you need for computing power moving forward as we expand because you don't want to be pigeonholed with the inability to expand the Waukesha 1 and go, after spending that kind of money, to be stopped here and we can't go that one step further.
Great.
So, that's why the replacement schedule is as it is.
It also eliminates any lease interest costs as well as, I believe, Darren, the $24,000 rebate by doing a single purchase.
Between cost avoidance with the interest expense with leasing, because Apple allows you to use your P card or credit card, so between those two will generate $40,000 plus with the lease, you also run into even legal expenses, they have a legal opinion, a lease this large requires a legal opinion.
Miss Police, yeah.
Factor that in. I think the other advantage to the purchasing, and Mr. O'Brien touched on it, is budget flexibility over the next two years.
Okay.
You won't have that lease payment.
Yeah, that's true.
So, those are the factors that drove us to that recommendation.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and, and thank you for clarifying, Mrs. Langels, that we're not buying these simply because we have the money. Technology, the Technology Committee is the one that drives the recommendations for what we should or shouldn't do as a district relative to, you know, capital resources. Finance just covers whether we're going to do it by lease or time payment or just do we have the capital to go ahead, which is the wisest way to do this. So, we covered this in finance, but really the recommendation to purchase this stuff is part of our technology plan.
Thank you very much.
And when will this become effective, the use of these new computers?
This will become effective the fall of next year.
Next year.
Very good. Okay, Mr. Edlund?
However, we do have the money because it was approved by referendum. Technically, yes, you do have, every year, there should be money set aside according to what that referendum said specifically for technology.
Right, but, and of course, it is part of our technology budget, it's just a matter whether you use the money by buying them outright or by buying them over time. That's, that's all we're doing.
Great, okay, great.
Okay, it was an approval item, we have a motion. Stacy, take the roll call, please.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Barbara Brzink?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Steve Edlund?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Ellen Langels?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Motion passes 8-0.
The third action item is approval of 2015-2016 budget amendment. As I discussed earlier, we, we had a surplus this year and in the past, when we've had surpluses, we've looked at using that surplus, how would we use that surplus or would we put it to our fund balance? And this year, the administration came to us with a recommendation that we use that surplus to take care of some maintenance needs in the district. As the year proceeds, additional information becomes available about the impacts of the sources available to the district and the planned use of district funds. The committee was presented a combination of budget transfers and amendments to the original budget, which followed the areas of IT to facilitate iPad equipment acquisition, the thing we just approved, and capital improvement budget in Fund 38 to provide revenue for required principal and interest payments. So, what we're doing here is that we approved the budget transfer amendments, but that also was, went to, went to transfer it into our maintenance budget to solve some problems which is placed on your desk prior, in your packet. The committee approved the 2015-16 budget amendment as presented and I so move.
Second, please.
Second.
Second. Pat Madden? Okay, any questions, discussion? Stacy, take the roll, please.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Ellen Langels?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Steve Edlund?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Barbara Brzink?
Aye.
Motion passes 8-0.
Okay, moving right along, monthly budget report. The committee was presented the budget report for the month of February, $16,686,387 was reported in the general fund revenue and $9,913,408 was expended during the month. $1,484,275,000 was reported in the Special Education Fund and $2,423,826 was expended. The district is operating in accordance of our budget projection in other areas. There were no discussion items, so, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you very good. All right, moving on, curriculum instruction and Dr. Langels is going to present that for me tonight?
Yes, I will be happy to do so, Madam Chair. As my script begins, good evening. I love it. Okay, so our last Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting was Tuesday, March 1st, a week ago last night. We have one action item and three information items and these appear on your agenda and you have them in your packet. The action item is middle school science curricular resources adoption and if you look at this packet, and we did have at our meeting the presence of some of our absolutely wonderful science faculty who answered, I thought, questions extremely well. Erica Miller provided the CNI committee with an overview of the request. It's updating our resource materials as she says to meet the needs of changing scientific standards and skills, includes teacher's guides, which we also had previously seen as a committee. On a vote of three to one, the CNI committee moved to approve the adoption of this for use in grades six through eight science classrooms for the upcoming 216-217 school year as presented and I so move.
Second.
Okay, any questions, discussion? Ms. Reinacek?
I just wanted to just say why I voted no on that. We, out of the 15 or so books, we and the committee were all just given one book to view and just look at and I believe they were teacher editions, we could also look online at the student copies. And when I looked up the one that I had, which was a pretty light topic, the, it said something about, and I wish I had written it down, but the timber lines, the reason the scientists believe that the timber lines have, are disappearing is because of global warming or something. And instead of saying, "Some scientists believe that the timber lines are disappearing because of global warming," I think these students, when they're reading that, they think, "Well, if scientists believe that, if that's what they think, then I have to think it." So, I was just, I know it's around here somewhere, it's okay, I was just disappointed that it wouldn't have given the options or two points of view again for the students to be able to have that discussion, be able to think for themselves, which is what we're trying to teach them to do. And so, one of our teachers from Last Paul Middle School had an extraordinary answer saying, "You know, I teach my students that there's going to be people lining up to tell you which way to think if you don't want to think for yourself, but if you want to think for yourself," he gives them the tools and that's incredible that he's allowing that in his classroom and I know of teachers who aren't in our science department and that is concerning to me. So, I'm glad that, I'm very thankful that he is doing that, although given spending this amount of money, hundreds of thousands of dollars for all of our students who are going to be reading this curriculum and studying it for the next however many years, ours is 20-plus years right now, the current curriculum that we have, and I understand that that needs to be updated, but do we have to have a curriculum that is so one-sided instead of presenting them with two options or two points of view at least? I just, that was one little snippet of a book that I got to have and there are countless books and they get deeper and deeper, where's all the, where are all the orgasms going? There, there's all sorts of topics that were much deeper than, than the book that I got and I could just imagine what it was full of. So, I can't say, I couldn't give my, my vote to spend this amount of money for curriculum like this to be given to our students to just retain that information instead of having both sides, again, which is always my issue with the curriculum that we're having. So, that's why I voted no.
Thank you, and I appreciate your opinion on this, Ms. Reinacek, and certainly your right to vote whichever way you choose. I think that what I hold is that, in all the disciplines that we teach, and I use that word intentionally, disciplines, there is a mixture of certainly fact, conjecture, opinion, sort of the thesis, antithesis, synthesis process. And I think that our teachers that night represented to us how they engage in that, and that's important. But I also think that if we have in history, again, the discipline I know the best, a statement that says, most historians believe George Washington was the first president, that's sort of meaningless in a sense, because I think pretty well all historians would accept that as fact. So, you know, sorting out what in fact is proven fact, as opposed to a thesis that you're testing and so forth, is, I think, the job of a great teacher. And I think we have great teachers here. So I guess I don't altogether understand, but you have the right to it, your objection here, because I think that learning a discipline is learning the difference between established fact, opinion, and how that process works. So I think our students are in good hands, and I think this is a great resource to guide them in that direction.
Ms. O'Brien?
Global warming is a fact, okay? And tomorrow could be global chilling. I mean, that could be a fact, too. You have cycles of environmental cycles, and global warming has impacts, and global chilling has impacts. There's parts of China that have turned into complete deserts because of global warming, and because the planet has warmed. Now, it could chill tomorrow. If this was to say specifically, this is the cause of global warming, I would take an issue with that, okay? Because we don't know specifically what has caused global warming. We have a lot of scientists that have conjectured what it's caused, and other scientists have conjectured otherwise. But global warming, or any sort of change in the environment that's significant, does have an effect on, you know, it's affecting our polar bears, it's affecting our deserts, it's affecting our ski resorts, it's affecting a lot of things. Now, like I said, it could chill tomorrow, but right now, global warming is a fact.
Mr. Edlund?
And from that standpoint, I love global warming. We've had a wonderful winter. December was just beautiful. Utility bills were under control, which helped our taxpayers and our district.
Oh, yeah.
You know, but the bottom line is, what I'm trying to say is that, and I guess this is a question that I had about this, was how often do they update their textbooks? Because science changes. If we go back and look at the science textbooks that were around when I was in high school, we had calculators about that big, you know, electronics. Forty years ago this year, by the way. So, you know, I guess that's what's important to me, is, you know, we're going to pay $240,000 for digital textbooks with a six-year license. How often is this textbook updated? Is it going to be updated within that six-year license? Is it, or are we buying something that all of a sudden, five years from now, is going to be, you know, proven to be not a scientific fact?
I don't know what the updating process is, but it does, typically with the digital textbooks, they do, there may be a small fee or whatever, or it might be built into the cost where it can be updated, you know, every year, every other year, or so on. But I don't know on this particular one what the updating is.
I'd ask Ryan to respond.
I'm just going to talk loud.
Okay.
It is.
Right now, this adoption is coming with a lot more digital resources than we've had in the past, and digital resources can be updated overnight, which have pros and cons as well. But it does come with some digital resources and some supports with that. Second thing to go with this is that we're looking across all of our content or our curriculum areas. There's a curriculum renewal cycle that has, will go, it goes into review about every four to six years, we're just kind of debating that. But once something like this would be adopted and implemented in our system, the review process really begins in about three years after that, to look at materials, whether they're relevant or not, or other pieces, and then can determine if they are relevant or need updating. So, and companies are constantly, like anything, updating and promoting their latest updates, so.
Yes.
With this particular contract, are we purchasing the curriculum from somebody that we would normally use in purchasing a hard copy of a book? Is there competition? Is there different science textbooks that we could buy digitally, and why do we pick this one?
I can speak to that, and you can probably speak to that better than I, but it isn't, I don't think in our packet, but it was previously given to us at CNI, which is typical when we adopt a textbook, where they'll give us a rubric and other books and materials that they've looked at.
That they reviewed.
And how they graded them all, and how they came to this. So we did at CNI, you know, have, we're privy to that.
Yes.
And that's by staff?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
With staff?
Yeah.
And I would say, as far as going along with what Ryan said, you know, I would say that textbook revision information is ongoing. And especially if it's digital, you know, they can make changes much more easier than republishing a book. But I think, I think, you know, the changes are ongoing.
Okay. And the last question I had is, you know, obviously, when we got into the iPads, it was the, one of the benefits of having the iPads is that we wouldn't have to have textbooks, which some people want, some people don't. Is this a prototype for us? I mean, how many textbooks do we have that are digital already, or don't we?
We have a number. I don't know what the number is.
Number, we have a lot.
But I mean, even when you buy them digitally, you have to pay for the license, and that's, and far cheaper than buying the actual hard copy.
Sure. More environmentally friendly, so it cuts down on the global warming, and we're all, okay, everybody's happy about this.
But it's my understanding that it does come with some hard, hard cop, hard, it does, Steve, it does come with some hard copies. Not one per pupil, but in every building, in every classroom, there are some hard copies for student reference, et cetera. So it does come with some. Yes.
What's wrong with Steve's night? Now you're, now you're trying to stop global warming all of a sudden by?
I do it every day.
You do? You do.
I just wanted to point out something. It's my understanding, from what I heard, that the Earth has actually not heated up in the last eighteen years, which is why they have to call it climate change now, and they've changed it from global warming to climate change. And what Kurt just said, that, that is why I'm worried, that, that there's someone who was so for something and believes so strongly in something that many scientists disagree on, that if a, if a person like that is teaching that science to students, that does not let them think for themselves, and they're just like, it is a fact, and it is, and it is, and it is, Dr. Seuss' book, that, that is what concerns me. And I'm thankful that we have school choice, because if parents don't want their children to be told, this is what you're going to think, then they can choose another school. Thank you.
Okay.
Call the question, huh?
Call the question. Stacy?
Barbara Brzink?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Ellen Langill?
Aye.
Steve Edlund?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes seven to one.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. We have several updates, and I think in here, we call them information items. So first, and this is really exciting, is the Global Education Achievement Certificate, GEAC, and the Seal of Bilitracy. D. Garcia came to our meeting and provided us with a review of a new opportunity that we have as a district to recognize students who participated in this global competency in multilingualism. Typically, they believe that students will do both. They won't just do the Seal of Bilitracy, but also this global competency. And as you can see on your yellow sheet, and we saw it in much greater detail, this GEAC award is available to graduating seniors who've completed eight credits of multidisciplinary coursework, specifically credits, four credits in science, literature, art, social science, and electives. And they gave us a list of some of the real exciting electives that we have, which are globally oriented, and, you know, just sound great. And also four credits in a consecutive world language within our district. So graduating seniors then can qualify for this, and it's a wonderful honor that then we could award them, as well as this Wisconsin Seal of Bilitracy, and it also describes that their achievement in a second language competency has demonstrated on probably the AP or SAT test. And interestingly enough, when we got into this, not that anybody wants to go into this any further tonight, maybe do, I don't know, nonspoken languages like Greek, Latin, and Braille could qualify, are low-incidence languages, even such as Hebrew, Arabic, Tamil, Telugu, Bengali, Hindi, Karenan, Russian, Turkish, and others. Anything that we have a way to use a metric on. So obviously, D. is looking at that. We don't expect that to be a common application, but I love the fact that we're open to it as a district. I just think that's wonderful. So as you can see on the yellow sheet, you know, the process of getting this Seal of Bilitracy is open to students, not just French and Spanish. So it is an inaction item, and we'll be reviewing it, but it looks like we're pretty excited about it going forward. Are there questions about either one of those programs?
Full carry none?
Carry none, okay. We had a 4K update, and again, you have that in your packet. It was a report from Laura Faust, and of course, Joe Cook, updated on our 4K enrollment, which is great. You can see that I don't want to repeat it, because you can read it. And you also have a chart here of the future 4K sites, existing 4K sites, supervisors, et cetera, et cetera. So it's a pretty comprehensive report and update. I think, again, if there are questions, we could take those.
I think, I think that 4K, if I'm not incorrect, is, they will, it will be at all schools except two.
Three.
Three. Okay.
Yeah.
So that's, that's great. That's an improvement.
Yeah, and the paper was pretty current on that tonight, so that's nice. Okay, and then also a middle school update that we received from changes previously approved regarding middle school scheduling. An update had been requested to our committee, particularly Rob Bennett and Jason Sodowsky, well, I think Rob Bennett, actually, were present to report on this implementation. Yeah, but I'm sorry, Rob did the presentation, of the new course selection process, including elective experience. So we reviewed that, I think we were pleased with that. It's not a permanent situation going forward, but it is going to help us a lot in this sort of transition year in middle school.
There were questions about Shark Tank Biz, and I believe that that's a business education course.
Okay. Great. Yeah.
Probably need some help from Ryan on this. I just, I just have a question.
Sure.
Is there, there was something I saw in the, in the packet about a short period that we have assigned in the program, like a thirty-minute period?
For the middle.
Yeah, for the middle school. Could you explain a little bit about that? Just, did I misread that, or?
No.
No, there's a, there is a small period in there. I can't remember the name of it. It consists of now that has a name, and they're looking at here. It's really, part of the goal of the new middle school schedule was to have some flexible time in there. There's a variety of uses of extending some learning time.
Advisory? Is that the one, that's the advisory and homeroom period?
Yeah, and it's turning into, really, kind of at our high school, too, our academic options is kind of rolling out, but it's, it's more of a responsive period. There are, we're using the term, that if, if learning is the constant and time is the variable, they needed some variable time, and that allowed for extended learning time for students that might need more time after math, or introductory time for students to go. So it's not a typical study hall where kids are just assigned. It is connected to grade levels and classrooms and content area that they have a little more flexibility, long-term science projects, and, as well as some direct coaching and support.
Okay. It just sounded a lot like what North High School, when we did the, you know, the twenty-minute skinny, or what do they call that, the little session, which is fine, and nothing wrong with that. The only, the only question I think, when we look at middle school or any of our schools, is student start time. I mean, there's a big issue about, should, should we be trying to educate kids really, really early in the morning, or should we? So if we were going to have this so-called reflection time, I guess I was wondering if it could be early in the morning, and then, you know, and then use the rest of the school day more. But anyway, that was my question, so.
As far as I'm concerned, the start time and end time has not changed.
I think it should be part of the discussion, though, for going forward.
But it does, it's not been determined when they're going to do it yet, so that's still open.
Where they're going to do it.
Well, and Mr. Gray has told us that's still under consideration in the, going forward, so.
And we're also looking at start times across the board, based on some information. Representative Scott Allen was here with some information from his urban task force, and we took a look at that, and we are just, we're looking at some different options. And I'm not going to bring those up now, just because it's not noticed, for one, but second of all, we don't know what the costs are, so.
I just remember reading that there's a school district that did change their start times based on that data, and it was whatever, you know, basically the goal of later start times.
Many are doing it right now.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Thank you for all the questions and comments. And, Madam Chair, this concludes my report. Our next CNI committee meeting, as you know well, is Tuesday, April 5th, Election Day 2016.
That's right. Thank you, Dr. Langill.
You're welcome.
Human Resources, Mr. Edlund?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for that, Dr. Langill. I was wondering what to call her. Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, we have the approval of the recommended candidate for the position of South High School principal. The administration is recommending Ryan Galant for the position of South High School principal. Ryan Galant is a strong leader with great initiative. He's demonstrated quality leadership in the 2014-15 school year, establishing himself as a collaborative leader of the teaching staff and as a capable administrator. Mr. Galant is currently at the, is currently the principal at East High School. Prior to that, Ryan was English teacher at Waukesha South High School. He's been with the district since 2012. Mr. Galant received a master's degree in educational and policy analysis from UW-Madison. He has a bachelor's degree in English and a post-baccalaureate degree in secondary English education. A confidential recommendation and resume was included in your packet. Salary and benefits will be according to the middle management policies. I move to approve the appointment of Ryan Galant to the principal, to the position of principal of South High School.
So second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Questions? Stacy, take the roll call, please.
Steve Edlund?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Barbara Brzink?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Ellen Langill?
Aye.
Mr. Edlund?
Thank you. Approval of the, the second item is the approval of the recommended candidate for
Thank you for all the questions and comments, and Madam Chair, this concludes my report. Our next CNI committee meeting, as you know well, is Tuesday, April 5th, Election Day 2016.
That's right. Thank you, Dr. Langill.
You're welcome.
Human Resources, Mr. Edlund.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you for that, Dr. Langill, I was wondering what to call her. Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, the, we have the approval of the recommended candidate for the position of South High School Principal. The administration is recommending Ryan Galant for the position of South High School Principal. Ryan Galant is a strong leader with great initiative. He's demonstrated quality leadership in the 2014-15 school year, establishing himself as a collaborative leader of the teaching staff and as a capable administrator. Mr. Galant is currently at the, is currently the principal at East High School. Prior to that, Ryan was English teacher at Waukesha South High School. He's been with the district since 2012. Mr. Galant received a master's degree in educational and policy analysis from UW-Madison. He has a bachelor's degree in English and a post-baccalaureate degree in secondary English education. A confidential recommendation and resume was included in your packet. Salary and benefits will be according to the middle management policies. I move to approve the appointment of Ryan Galant to the principal, to the position of principal of South High School.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Questions? Stacy, take the roll call, please.
Steve Edlund.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Barbara Brzink.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Ellen Langill.
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero. Mr. Edlund.
Thank you. Approval of the, the second item is the approval of the recommended candidate for the position of Horning Middle School Principal. The administration is recommending basketball center Robert Blessington for the position of Horning Middle School Principal. That was my, sorry about that. Mr. Blessington's a very, very tall individual, we love him. Mr. Robert Blessington has shown a strong investment in the meeting of the needs of students from diverse backgrounds. He is highly skilled in developing rapport with students of all ages and backgrounds. Similarly, he has shown a high level of success in developing positive rapport with staff and parents. He seeks leadership opportunities as a means to positively impact the work of teachers and impact lives of students, lives of more students by developing strong teachers. Mr. Blessington is currently principal of Hadfield Elementary School, also held the position of assistant principal to North High School. Prior to coming to Waukesha, he was a teacher and a teacher leader for Sussex Hamilton, Wisconsin Schools, and in California. Mr. Blessington received a Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education and a special, and Special Education from University of Wisconsin, Stevens Point. He has a Master's in Education from California State University and a Master's in Educational Leadership from Marion College. A confidential recommendation resume was included in your packet. Salary and benefits will be according to the middle management policies. I move to approve the appointment of Robert Blessington to the position of principal of Horning Middle School.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. The move is seconded to accept Robert Blessington as new principal of Horning Middle School. Any questions? Yes.
I don't have a question, I just have one concern. The only problem that I, the only hesitation is that the Hadfield community has gone through so many principals lately, and he's so good over there, and I know Horning's going to love him, and he's going to be great. What do we, are we looking for?
We're, we've begun the process to replace him.
And this one's going to stay?
And we believe we have some very qualified candidates that step in.
Okay. Stacy, will you take the roll call, please?
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Steve Edlund.
Aye.
Ellen Langill.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Barbara Brzink.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Edlund.
That concludes my report, thank you.
Okay, very good. And we've come to the end of our committee reports and the end of our agenda. It looks like we are going to adjourn to executive session. Could we have a motion, please, in that regard?
I'll move.
Oh, Pat.
Pat?
I'll move to adjourn to executive session per Wisconsin statute nineteen point eighty-five sub one sub C to discuss teacher negotiations.
Okay, is there a second, please?